Seattle is a majority renter city, as they think you all know, and renters must be prioritized in this budget.
We must keep doors open on our current shelter and housing program to ensure people have safe places to go.
I'm here to ask council members to help us ensure continuance of services for victims of sexual assault.
You are hearing some of the public comments that are flowing into the Seattle City Council right now from the first public hearing on the budget, which happened this week as the council gets feedback on the mayor's $8.9 billion proposal. What are people calling for? What sort of budget concerns are on the horizon? And what impact is a federal shutdown having on Seattle? Plus, some new insights on the Seattle mayor's race and the federal agency ICE making some inroads into Seattle you might not even be aware of. All this and more considered this week on Seattle News, Views and Brews, your coffee break political podcast. I'm Brian Callanan. The views expressed here are mine. I'm a host on the Seattle Channel. Great to be with you once again, and I'm with my friend and co-host David Crome, City Hall reporter for the Seattle Times. David, I guess I gotta say it, of course, the Mariners, of all teams, found a way to bring a rain delay with them as they visit Detroit in the AL Divisional Series. How fitting was that?
Yeah, I know, although I'll have to be honest, which is the timing is much better for me because it was a middle of the workday game and now looking like it's gonna be after a workday. So it's probably annoying for a lot of people, but kind of works better for my schedule, honestly.
Have you ever thought about David's schedule, kind of the most important part of this, isn't it? David, thank you as always, and thank you, everyone, including our background noise sponsor, City Grind Espresso on the first floor of City Hall. Thanks also to the patrons of the show. Mike jumped on board as a $5 a month supporter last week. I'm gonna be sending a Seattle News, Views and Brews decal his way. You also got to hear a patron's first podcast this week with Rachel Smith, formerly of the Seattle Metro Chamber. Some pretty good stuff there. Check it out. Be a patron and you can learn a lot more about it. It's on Patreon, Seattle News, Views and Brews. Also, thanks for watching this podcast on Converge Media, the video version on Converge, Wednesday nights at 7:00. All right, let's get to it. Time for Right Here, Right Now. Let the budget hearings commence. The very first budget hearing in the Seattle City Council's nearly two-month process happened on Tuesday of this week with an afternoon session featuring some call-in public testimony, another in-person session in the evening. The council's breaking it up in some different ways right now. And David, what struck me about the early part of this session at least is that there are so many issues that voters are passionate about. I counted five supporters of more money for trees and a better program there. About the same amount for people looking for more support for treatment programs, criminal diversion programs like LEED. But then you got your folks concerned about office of labor standards funding, immigrant and refugee affairs. It's a little dizzying, I know. How do you think public testimony is going to shape the budget? Is it going to move the needle on what could be a very tight budget season here?
I think, you know, most of the council people probably have a sense of what their priorities are already, and I doubt that those fundamentally will change all that much. At the same time, you know, this council has shown if the issue is in their wheelhouse, and I think trees is probably one of those where if they get enough feedback, you do see some movement. And so I think it could, and you know, I don't think they hold these public hearings purely for symbolism. I do think some of the comments do actually make their way in. But, you know, at the same time, we've talked about this before, this budget is gonna be tight, and there's no extra money to spend at this point. So if anybody in the council wants to fund something at a different level, they have to take that money from somewhere else, and that's gonna end up being the whole math equation here. And so, yeah, I mean, I would expect that at the end of the day, it'll be the sort of, you know, $500,000 here, $1 million here, that sort of thing. Though fundamentally, I expect that the actual budget isn't gonna look that much different than what is proposed by the mayor here.
Yeah, yeah, I would imagine the same. And I do want to follow up on another story we talked about last week. You actually wrote an article about CARE, Community Assisted Response and Engagement. That's the department that handles 911 calls, also sends out teams of social workers to help with person-down calls, for example, that don't need an armed officer. It sounds like CARE's chief, Amy Barton, is getting frustrated with what she sees as a pattern of subversion by street-level officers. They seem to be rejecting or ignoring assistance from these civilian responders. What's going on here and what budget implications are there to this story?
Yeah, the CARE saga itself is just very kind of complicated and weedy, and I think frustrating for a lot of people because this is the thing that was... If you can point to anything that came out of 2020 and all those protests, it's kind of this. This is the thing that's supposed to provide a response for those moments you experience when you're downtown or wherever and you come across somebody who clearly needs help, but you don't really want to call the cops on them. This is supposed to be that. But the problem is it's been caught up in these super thorny fights and negotiations with the Seattle Police Officers Guild. Because, you know, I mean, one of the selling points is a lot of officers don't like to do that sort of work. And so the win-win pitch of the CARE department is, you know, it provides a more kind of muted and perhaps less dangerous response while at the same time freeing up cops to do something that is more suited to police officers. But the union, and Mike Sol and its president in particular, has always been, has never let an opportunity pass by to negotiate something. And, you know, that's frustrating to people, but he is the head of a union. That is what unions do. And so, you know, at the end of the day, the care work, the care work is a body of work argument because it would be taking away calls from Seattle police officers. That's kind of the whole point. And so he's using, the union is using that to negotiate with the city over it. And because there is no agreement right now, the whole CARE department is required to respond alongside officers. And so what Amy Barton is saying is that that system, which she already thinks is flawed, is being made even more flawed because the officers are really not playing ball, that they're taking steps to cancel CARE calls, to, you know, they'll get to a scene and just close it out without waiting for CARE. And it kind of defeats the whole point of having CARE around, which is, you know, these people are trained in a way that officers are not, and to find some kind of more lasting solution for these people who might be in some kind of intense crisis, whereas the officers are there really to just solve the scene itself, not necessarily the things that that individual might need. And so if officers aren't playing ball, which Amy Barton is saying in pretty blunt terms that they're not, the functionality of CARE is really undermined.
Yeah, and I just think about this because there's this temporary agreement between Seattle and the police union. It's supposed to run out at the end of this year with regard to CARE. And then I think about the budget process that's going on at the same time, too, because there's this 0.1% sales tax increase that was allotted by the state government for city governments like Seattle to use. They're saying, we want to put a lot of that into CARE. Help me out with these kind of big decisions at the end of the year because I would think that the city would want to invest that money. It sounds like they do into CARE, but at the same time, if they don't have an assurance of that agreement, then it's tough to make that investment. Help me out with that thought if you can.
Yeah, because the proposed investment would double the number of CARE responders from 24 to 48, but the agreement says you can't have more than 24. And so, you know, Amy Barton says, if we get that money, we'll have something to do with it. We have a lot of work, you know, administrative, whatever it might be. But at the end of the day, what you want from CARE is people out on the streets doing CARE work. And until they get an agreement, they can't do that at a greater level than they are now. And so then it does raise the question of what is that money actually funding? Is it funding what we want it to? I will say that I think it's quite likely that there is going to be an agreement soon, or at least, I guess I'll say, I think it's quite likely there will be a tentative agreement soon, as in, I think, from what I hear just from people talking off the record, because it's really sensitive stuff, talking about labor negotiations. My sense is they think they're close and might even have a tentative agreement soon. You know, we don't know exactly, but then for me, it's the question of, can the union sell that tentative agreement to its members? I mean, there does seem to be some kind of conflict here. So I think they will get an agreement soon-ish. It's just whether or not it can get ratified by the union. I think it's probably gonna cost money. I think that if, I mean, again, frankly, if the union negotiators for the police are worth their paychecks, they're probably gonna try and push for higher pay for officers in exchange for some of these changes. So it might cost them money. But I do think, I do think the proposal is some kind of expression of confidence that an agreement can and will be reached before the end of the year. And certainly Mayor Harold hopes before the election.
Yeah, no doubt. And that's another piece of this here. The election hangs over so many parts of this budget. And I did want to talk about another potential city of Seattle budget issue where just about a week into a federal government shutdown here, KOW reported that Seattle and King County governments are standing by with food vouchers if recipients in the WIC program, commonly known as food stamps, start to run out of benefits. And I'm just thinking about it, David, because from all the reports I'm seeing, this could be a long federal shutdown we're talking about here. How would a shutdown like that affect a local government like the city of Seattle? Maybe the budget process here, because there's a lot of federal funding that goes into the city budget, too.
Yeah, the biggest, you know, the biggest federal pass-through, well, it's a little hard to track because, you know, it almost is, laundering is the wrong word, but it almost feels that way, which is the federal money, a lot of it goes into the state, which then goes to the city. And so you kind of have to track that pipeline. Is that gonna get hung up? As far as what goes directly to the city, transportation funds are a big one. You know, do some of the paychecks on some federally-backed projects start drying up? What does that mean for construction? And then, yeah, services like that, the food access or healthcare programs certainly are at risk. And then, but then, yeah, it would be hard for me to sort of draw a map of how much money coming from the state is sort of originally coming from the federal government. But it certainly, you could imagine that this will cause some backups in the piping, so to speak.
Yeah, and I thought the other side of this, the fact that our state actually has nearly 80,000 federal workers employed here, Gene Balk at the Times, one of your colleagues, reporting this. There are about 18,000 in King County alone. You've got exempt workers like postal workers still getting paid, but that's not the case for all the federal government jobs. And when you have President Trump threatening that these employees might not get back pay after the shutdown's over, I just feel like this could impact a lot of spending power locally here, too, when you talk about the shutdown.
And, you know, the city forecasters, their economic forecast are gonna come out with another recommendation in October, and they were already kind of leaning toward the pessimistic... Because, you know, whenever these forecasters come up with estimates, they have three scenarios, the rosy one, the baseline one, and the pessimistic one. And last time, they chose the middle-of-the-road one. But if they're getting some indication that people are going to react to this shutdown in some way and not spend as much, whatever it might be, maybe they're more likely, even just a little bit, to go with the pessimistic forecast, in which case that's a lot less money for the city to spend, and then the city council people are gonna have to find cuts. So certainly, I think that's probably a risk facing City Hall right now.
Yeah, for sure. All right, well, coming up, what else do we have to learn about the two mayoral candidates in Seattle? Katie Wilson and the incumbent Bruce Harrell, and how will that affect voters in November? We're gonna take a closer look at these questions. Coming up next on Now Hear This. A slew of debates continues to dominate the airwaves here in the Seattle mayor's race. David and I have both now moderated a debate in the past couple of weeks here. If you didn't catch the action with David last week on King 5, guess what? Katie Wilson and Bruce Harrell are definitely still fighting with each other.
She said, for example, I had lowered funding in LEED, which is a law enforcement diversion program. Absolutely untrue, a flat-out lie.
Our current mayor's face was all over mailers that went out this February supporting an alternative to the measure that would have funded the social housing developer, an alternative that did not provide a new funding source, that took money away from other affordable housing, essentially robbing Peter to pay Paul.
David, I gotta say, nice work on this event. And folks, if you want to see David Crome in a coat and tie, a rare and beautiful occurrence, look at the replay on YouTube. Great stuff. David, what was that like? What stood out to you during that debate?
Yeah, it was kind of what I expected. I mean, I appreciated, actually, that there was a... We tried to give them a lot of chances to go back and forth and respond to each other, and I think that they did that, to your point. I think they understand what's going on here and are going after each other pretty hard as a result. I would say particularly Harrell, probably because he is, you know, kind of the underdog at this point.
Nine-and-a-half-point underdog, yeah.
After the August primary, and so he's going after her pretty hard. And I think Katie Wilson is kind of trying to, my takeaway from this debate, is sort of trying to put her head down and, you know, feel confident that her message is the right one and kind of move forward. And, but, you know, it nevertheless had a good amount of back and forth with, you know, it kind of boils down to Katie Wilson saying, you know, Mayor Harold, you've been around forever and you don't have a great vision for the city. And Mayor Harold saying, Katie Wilson, you don't have a plan for what you're, all these, you know, things that you're saying you want to do. And, you know, they're doing a lot of these debates, so we're hearing some repetition, for sure. But, you know, I, maybe I'm misremembering, but this feels about as lively of a mayoral competition as I can remember.
Yeah, I was gonna say, just the amount, the sheer number of debates is a whole lot more. I'm actually moderating another one in West Seattle coming up on Thursday of this week. If you're around and want to check out what's going on with the West Seattle Chamber of Commerce, folks, make sure you do it. David, I also wanted to touch on this. You wrote a piece about Katie Wilson that really went into her background, which I wasn't fully aware of. She left college, Oxford University in England, just six weeks before she would have graduated. As you described it, kind of a tug-of-war between education and activism, where the activism won out. And I wanted to talk about that story because clearly the Harrell campaign jumped on this immediately. Harrell saying, hey, she dropped out of college. I was the first to go to college in my family and so proud of it. But what did you learn about Katie Wilson? What do you think voters are learning about her right now?
Yeah, yeah, I saw Harrell's announcement today and saying something about, you know, today we learned, but that's not right at all. He's been talking about her education for a while. I think he even brought it up in the debate last Friday before we even published our story. So he did not learn that from the Seattle Times. But certainly, he seems to think, certainly, he seems to think that that is a point in his favor. Whereas, you know, I think other people say, see, this is evidence, and this is how Katie Wilson describes it. And, you know, I talked to people who have known her most of her life and how they would describe it, which is a commitment to the sort of work that she has always wanted to do. I think you can disagree with some of her proposals, a lot of her proposals or whatever, her policy, but my takeaway is that Katie Wilson has always been very ideologically-minded, very aware of what she sees as right and wrong. I think this life of activism started from a very young age. You know, I can't even remember, and it's a long enough story, I can't remember if I put this in there, but, you know, I think she met her now husband at a protest against elephants in the circus when they were in high school. And so I think her decision to leave Oxford, you know, Harrell is trying to paint that as quitting. And, you know, she was very forthright about the fact that her parents were upset by that decision at the time. But it also just really showed her full commitment to the kind of life that she has led. And like, you can say what you want about the decision, but now she is the frontrunner to be the Seattle mayor. And so it's hard to say that that decision was the wrong one for her because here she is now. And I think I led with that in the piece because I do think it says a lot about her as a person that she eschewed this kind of traditional path that a lot of people take that can lead to probably higher paying and more high-profile jobs than what she had for much of her life. But I do think it comes from a genuine place, which again, is not just her words. It's the words of the people who have known her, a genuine place of, this is the life I want to lead and I have to commit myself fully to that.
Yeah, I also wanted to make sure I gave some time to this. There was some hubbub online about a comment Bruce Harrell made at a recent debate regarding a criminal repeat offender. The mayor's line was, when this person is committing six or seven crimes, I don't know his or her story. Maybe they were abused as a child, maybe they're hungry, but my remedy is to find their life story to see how we can help. Wasn't talking a lot, putting about that person in jail. This really lit up the conservative news outlets for sure. Any thoughts about this? Is just a blip on the road. Does this comment hurt him in this race? How do you look at this, David?
No, this comment doesn't hurt him.
Okay.
This is Seattle, and, you know, he's losing to his left. He's not losing to his right. So, no, I don't think the comment hurts him. And I think the comment in context is one that is widely agreed upon in the Seattle electorate. And, you know, you hear Lisa Dugard at LEED make this argument a lot, which is, if you actually want to address public safety, you do have to take that approach. Because we have seen lots of data of the 100, 200-plus people in Seattle and King County who are arrested way more than six or seven times, over and over and over. It's misdemeanor crime, and so you're not, you can't put these people away for life. But, and so, you know, you can't kind of fully depend, the argument is you can't kind of fully depend on arrests and release as being the thing that is gonna solve their problem. And if you, you know, the central argument of LEED, which is very popular in Seattle, is if you want to actually improve public safety, you have to find the way for these people to not be arrested anymore. And doing so requires kind of some of what the mayor's talking about, which is understanding where they're coming from and what it is that they need. So certainly, it is an easy thing to glom onto, and I saw Stephen Miller tweeting about it from President Trump, his kind of senior advisor. But as far as, you know, I also saw Jonathan Cho, the former coma reporter, you know, sort of trying to frame this as the end of Mayor Harrell's campaign.
Oh, boy.
Mayor Harrell may very well lose, but it's not gonna be because of this.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. I did want to talk about another federal issue, I guess, that's flared up in Seattle and other cities in the past few weeks here. ICE, the Immigrations and Customs Enforcement at the federal level, recruiting local police officers to join their ranks. The Associated Press wrote about this a couple of days ago. The Trump administration spending millions to run TV ads in places like Seattle with messages, and I'm paraphrasing in part here, hey, officers, join ICE because in sanctuary cities, you're ordered to stand down while dangerous illegals walk free. Councilmember Kettle actually spoke out about this a few weeks ago from the Seattle City Council. Said the ads were bad for Seattle's progress on hiring officers and public safety in general. But then you got ICE offering enticements like $50,000 in signing bonuses, maybe paying for education. The sell really looks like it's on here. What do you make of these ads, David?
It's interesting, you know, there are occasional culture and political clashes between the Seattle Police Department force and the city of Seattle. We saw this, there was, you know, a Trump flag in one of the rooms. And, you know, I think a lot of the folks who work for the Seattle Police Department come from, there's a lot of military background, certainly a much higher proportion of military people than what live in Seattle. And so there is just sort of baked in, like, a little bit of a demographic difference between who works for the Seattle Police Department and who works for Seattle. And I think it would be fair to call that group probably more conservative than the city as a whole. At the same time, you know, the Seattle Police Department lost a lot of people around 2020, and now are hiring people. And if you were joining the Seattle Police Department at a time like this, you shouldn't have any kind of misunderstandings about the area you were coming to work in and the fact that you do work in a sanctuary city and a sanctuary state. And so it's not like anybody in the Seattle Police Department doesn't kind of know why they're there. And there have been plenty of other opportunities for them to leave, you know. Lots of departments all across the state and the country have been offering similar signing bonuses. And so if you're still at the police department, you must have some reason to still be there. So, you know, I wouldn't expect this necessarily to leave, lead to a flood of exits or whatever it might be. But maybe a couple, you know, and it is interesting that, you know, it is interesting that they think that this is fertile recruiting ground. I don't know exactly what that says about the whole environment, but certainly interesting.
Well, it just makes me think about the larger issue nationally because Seattle is definitely not alone when it comes to hiring officers. And this was going back before the pandemic. We're talking about police departments around the country really having a tough time hiring officers. And when that whole idea of a $50,000 bonus is dangled out there, okay, maybe Seattle's department, the Seattle Police Department, isn't as affected by much. But you've got a lot of different local jurisdictions around here in terms of police departments, where I think you might have people who would be tempted to do that, for the dollars of it, at least.
Yeah, no, for sure. I think there was a lot of that. And in fact, you know, there was some data that showed there were a number of people who left for a signing bonus, stayed the minimum number of years, and then came back for the signing bonus at their old place. So, yes, it does entice movement. I guess just my point is that if you want to find a signing bonus, you can find a signing bonus. It doesn't, it is not ice in a vacuum, you know. Lots of police departments across the state have these signing bonuses.
Right, right.
I think that if you want to go to work for ICE, it's because you believe in that mission and want to do that work, which I don't think a recruitment video, the existence of a recruitment video won't change that. You know, if you believe in the mission of ICE, then you probably were already interested. And if you don't, you probably weren't. So, you know, I think the existence of the recruitment video is probably more symbolically, creates a little more symbolic tension than what the actual consequences may be.
Fair, fair. All right, well, coming up, a look at a victory for the state of Washington coming from the U.S. Supreme Court, the tale of the Climate Commitment Act, coming up on What's Next? David, I wanted to highlight some news that came down just a few days ago as the U.S. Supreme Court gets its session underway on the first Monday in October. The court declined to hear a challenge to Washington's Climate Commitment Act, which requires polluters to pay for pollution allowances. This is the cap and vest law of 2021, set up a carbon market in our state. I was just shocked by this, David, because we have a conservative-majority U.S. Supreme Court. They didn't have a written justification for why they did this, but what did you make of this? I thought this was a pretty big deal.
Yeah, it's a big deal. You know, at the same time, I do think the Supreme Court turns down most of the cases that are petitioned there. They can only take so many. I don't know what the, you know, this court seems to be increasingly moving toward wanting to take big conservatives precedent-setting swings. And while certainly I would expect a court like this to strike down a kind of liberal priority like the Climate Commitment Act, I don't know what the kind of broader implications would be for the country or what that would mean to people outside of Washington State. Certainly would hurt the prospect of future carbon markets, but there aren't that many of those. It's really California and, I mean, Canada, but of course, that wouldn't matter.
Right, right.
So it doesn't surprise me, mostly for the pure kind of logistical piece of it, which is they only have...
Is this where we want to spend our time? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you see it in any way as a vindication, though, for our state's climate policies? They've been attacked with three initiatives since 2016, all of which have failed, including one last year. I just wanted to talk about what this means in terms of climate policy and its future here, and possibly in other states. What does that mean from that perspective, do you think?
I don't think this decision serves as vindication necessarily because of what I said, which is I wouldn't doubt that this court would, I'm sure this court would love to find a way to strike it down. I think the real vindication came with the initiative, which is, it was like, I think the Climate Commitment Act is probably, I don't know, I don't know if I want to declare this, but it might be enemy number one of a lot of kind of conservative and even moderate voices in Washington State who see it as basically a hidden gas tax, or maybe even not such a hidden gas tax, funding things that they don't agree with. So the fact, though, that those, that a lot of those folks got really organized, got this initiative out there and it failed, that was the real vindication for it. And I think we saw that in the last legislative session, that was a fairly-left legislative session last year. And I think that was directly the result of that initiative, as well as the capital gains repeal initiative failing pretty sizably. So despite some fairly vocal conservative voices speaking out against this, voters at least don't seem to, voters still seem to back it. And so that, I think, was the real vindication here. And now they're kind of looking for other, more legal avenues to strike it down, but that won't necessarily hurt its popularity.
Yeah, no, it's definitely something our state voters have supported, for sure. All right, well, David, we do need to wrap up. Back to the Ms. here. I can't believe it, man. You were at game two, the Mariners' first home playoff win in more than 20 years. What was that like, man?
Yeah, it was great. I went with my brother-in-law. We, sort of a last-minute impulse decision. We spent way too much on centerfield seats, and I think we were, I think we were, so we were in the centerfield bleachers, like, under the big screen.
Like, you can't even see the big screen. Perfect, okay.
No, 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 yeah, we couldn't see the hydro races or anything. I think we were maybe four rows from the back, like, we were close to as nosebleed as you could get. But it was, it's great, though, because you can see the whole crowd. You can see, it's a really good angle to see home runs from because you can see the ball going out. You know, so it was, you know, I went to some playoff games in 2001 and 2000 when I was a kid, and I have great memories of that. And this is top five, maybe top three best Seattle sports experiences I've ever had. It was, because it was a great game, but also, you know, the Seahawks had just let out, so it was just as packed down there as I've ever seen it. But everyone, it wasn't like claustrophobic. Everyone was having a great time. All the vendors were just making an insane amount of money, I'm sure. All the bars were packed, and then, you know, to come out, and I took the ferry home, and even on the ferry, people were doing Mariners chants.
Awesome, that's cool.
It was, it was just such a, I spent more than I was comfortable spending, and I have zero regrets whatsoever doing it. It was, it was truly one of the better sporting experiences I've ever had.
Yeah, and having two superstars come through like that, Cal Raleigh and Julio Rodriguez, was great. And then I do have another question from my list of questions that I'm always afraid to ask my wife. So Josh Naylor, just about to be on paternity leave, or maybe he did. I don't quite know what's going on right yet. It's one of these situations where I'm like, oh, man, if I was that baseball player in the playoffs, just had my first kid, like, what do you do in that situation? It's so tough because you want to help your team, but you've got your family, and I don't know. What did you make of that? How do you look at that situation?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, as a Mariners fan, I have to say this, but I think Josh Naylor, I mean, in a just world, he would just go and spend the week with his wife and kid. And, you know, that's such a playoff... know, that's such a playoff, I'm, I'm over the moon with what the Mariners are doing right now. I'm wrapped up, as wrapped up in it as anybody. But, you know, I have two young kids, and that's just, baseball will happen again next year. I, I feel for the guy that he has to make that decision. But there is a lot of pressure on him, I'm sure, to come back and play for the team even a day or so after his wife gives birth to his kid. And I think ideally, the Mariners win quick to the, today and tomorrow, and then they get a few days off, and she has the kid there. And then they go into the ALCS, and he can feel a little more comfortable.
Boy, I sure hope so. Yeah, I know. It's one of those, it's one of those things. Baseball's a crazy sport like that. You do have to be there. You have to show up. We're looking for a, a good family moment there happening for the Naylor family and, and for the Mariners family, too, for that matter. David, thank you as always for joining me. Thanks to everybody who is listening to Seattle News Views and Brews, where you can always find out what's happening in local politics. If you want to be a patron and support the show, go for it. Please pledge $5 per month or more to Patreon on Seattle News Views and Brews. You can do that there. And thank you very much for your help. You can hear this podcast on Apple, Spotify, wherever you listen, we are there. Thanks for watching on Converge Media, too. See you next time. Seattle News Views and Brews is an independent production of Kalanand Media Services. Copyright